Gentlemen, we welcome you to the Pierce County Board of Commissioners' regular monthly meeting, agenda, May the first, 2012, at 6:00 p.m. Would you stand for the invocation? And it would be due, invocation.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father God, we thank you for this great and awesome day that's been given us. Lord, we thank you that we're able together in a free nation tonight, Lord, be able to worship one God, one Savior. Lord, we just ask tonight with our leadership God that you'll continue to lead, guide, and direct them. Lord, allow them to make their righteous decisions. Sometimes the decisions that are made, dear Lord, are not always the popular decisions. Lord, we just pray that you'll give them the encouragement they need. Father, we just ask you to continue to bless our community and its leadership, all the way from the local level to the national level. And Father, tonight, we just ask that whatever we say and do will be done decently and done in order. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Now I'll give you a minute if it looks over you. A minute? And then I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion with President Chairman.
Second. All in favor by signifying aye. Aye. And the ayes have it. Okay, item number two. Now we approved hiring Rand Tyson for the construction of the fire at the NFC. Before we make this final vote, I think we need to hear from Mr. Tommy Hatcher.
Oh. What I should or shouldn't say, I kind of had a warning or threat or whatever you want to call it just a minute ago before the meeting started.
No, sir, Mr. Tommy, that what? The warning, that what? The threat?
Yes, it was.
No, sir, it what?
Yes, it was.
You standing up there and telling the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I'm telling.
That's what I asked you to do.
That's what I'm going to do.
That's right. Good. Carry on, David.
Um, I was asked to come tonight to just discuss the situation with hiring Tyson Construction to complete the NFC building. The, um, the only things I wanted to point out, the work left to do on the NFC building, aside from the fire damage, is caulking doors, I mean caulking windows, hanging doors and hardware, putting up door signs, uh, some tack boards, baseboards, um, sprinklers, just little minor things like that. Um, now, it's your money. You do with it as you please, but if I were in this position, uh, my recommendation would be to let the prisoners finish that work. I mean, that's things I could do myself if I was working on my house. Uh, it's not something that you need a professional, uh, commercial contractor to do. So, that's all I want to say about that. I say, it's up to you guys, you got the long money there, but, um, if you want to save the county some money, um, the prisoners certainly can do this work. Any questions?
I'd like for y'all to read the letter that I have, Mr. Wilson, I'll give you one. Take the minutes to read it. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something that says, Mr. Bowen, in connection with your request, with your question about the remaining work out, it could be accomplished after the fire damage is repaired, in the NFC building, the only remaining work would be to install the doors, the door hardware, door signage, and any marker board and tack boards, all of which has already been purchased by the county. Accordingly, any extra labor to accomplish this work would, in my opinion, this is the architect we hired in 2005 to oversee this project, in my opinion, would take the inmates approximately four weeks. And the inmates would be working on top of finished work related to the fire affair. Or it would take the contractor approximately one week. Now, I'll let y'all make y'all's decision on what y'all thinks best. Mr. J.C.'s salary and everything and all, I'll let y'all make y'all's decision. I think this whole project has been misled and misrepresented the whole time. I've bit my tongue on it, and I think it's been misrepresented, and I think it'll be, I'm putting it in motion right now for I have a construction frenzy audit on the whole job.
No, the motion, I'll second that. That's good. I'm proud y'all think I'm an idiot.
Well.
I'm certainly proud y'all think I'm an idiot.
When you hired me in 2005, you trusted me sincerely, and then now you don't, you don't listen to me?
I've, I've been sitting here all this time trying to save money up there, but if y'all want Rand to fix it, go ahead, get Rand, because-
You want to talk about saving money?
Right now, I'm coming in, I under a million dollars under budget with those two bills.
I've asked you repeatedly since I've been on this board, how much is it going to take to finish that project, and you yet to give me an answer on what it's going to take. You don't know how much you're going to come under budget. You spent money and spent money and spent money down there, and you didn't manage to work a flint, and that's reason the chairman's going to shake his hand.
I think you need to shut your mouth.
Well, I did.
You're out of here. Yes, I've spent money.
You're right.
We're not trying to rip the county off. I second it. All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that I didn't vote on it, because I'm trying to save money. But I will tell you, Rand Tyson will have to give me a price to finish it.
I think that's good.
He will have to give me a price to finish it after the fire damage.
I think that's good.
I have never kicked y'all in suspense or how much. I've never done that.
Mr. Chairman, I've got several questions on what it means to finish.
Bring them out. Bring them out.
Well, let's, let's, let's all-
Time to open that right up.
Just all bring it up.
Can I give you some information?
Yes, sir.
As of March 14th, this is straight from Rusty McCall, the original budgeted amount for the NFC building and the multipurpose building is $5,250,000. Projected amount that it's going to take to finish, such as without using the contracted labor, to finish the project, $4,196,000, which puts us at a million and fifty-three thousand dollars under budget for those two bills. And the information's right here. You want it, it's yours. If you said you never had anything, I'm offering it to you right now.
We, we, we have no, a very price wise, what it's going to cost to finish the job.
No, this is an estimate. Everybody knows this is an estimate. Any projection's going to be an estimate.
In the, in the minutes of 2005, of July, July, 2005, the board commissioners was, it says 5.2 or 5.3 million with in-kind labor, of prison labor of 1.5. So, we approved 5.2 or 5.3 with a $3 million USDA loan. Note, note the minutes says 3 million.
Okay. I, I know where I wronged, I wasn't involved in 2005, so.
How did it get to 7.9 from 5.2 to 5.3?
I was not involved that early on, I can't tell you. Um, and all those projections back then, like you said, were, were projections just like we're talking about now. Nobody can see four or five years in the future what prices are going to do or anything else. I'll also mention to you that the library is going to come in over budget by a half a million dollars, which is still going to leave us a half a million dollars under budget for the total project. Yeah, based on the projections right now, so.
But the projections have been moved up since 5.43.
And you're going, you're going to move them up more by using the contractor to finish this little pin and work that's got to be done on the NFC building, I can tell you that, so. Like I said, it's your money, it's county's money, I hope you don't put it on my tax bill, um, when it comes time to make the payments.
You know, just amazed at me that I'm, I'm, I'm the jackass of this crowd, of all four of these board members.
I thank you all.
You just did it.
That don't mean it's done.
I've even got one of, two of the county employees up there, AJ will tell you this, got a motor grader and, and, uh, track hoe, trying to save this county money to come under, to beat that $500,000. I showed you four weeks ago, did I? Showed you four weeks ago?
Just figure out what you had, you just figure out the amount of money you're going to have per square footage on this project. And keep in mind, you're using inmate labor, you've had an existing gem that you remodeled, and you had an existing NFC project. So, go figure your cost per square foot and match it up with anything you want to match it up with.
Well, I'm, I'm satisfied you could do better, Carl.
I didn't say I couldn't.
Well.
Mr. Chairman.
Why are you saying that I could?
I'm not, I'm not pointing this to you.
Yes, you are.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you was too, and I, I, I'm offended at that.
Mr. Chairman, that's big.
Yes.
It didn't work in Atlanta when Carl tried to get J.C. and Rusty McCall dismissed, so he's trying to make it work now. But we all know it didn't work in Atlanta.
So, it's, so we're going to get a bid from Rand that we're going to do on the week's work? Is that what we're going to do with Chairman?
Yes.
Now, we wonder how much it's going to cost, and we need to know, don't you, don't you say?
We don't have one, we don't have one on fire yet, uh, but it's certainly going to be more than $121,000.
Yeah, where are we at with the insurance company on that right now?
We're still getting prices up, what it's going to cost.
Who is, we are, or the construction, or?
Rand Tyson.
So, is he in contact with the insurance agent?
He's working with Rusty McCall.
And they talk with the insurance people, is that how, I just trying to understand the process here.
And how did you get this email?
I asked for another question, sir.
I ain't even seen this email.
You, you, you must have seen it, because you sure talking about it.
Who give it to you?
You, you talking around town about it.
Who give you this? This was pulled off of my computer, they gave.
It was pulled from your computer, either.
I think you have your nose stuck in a lot of the county business that you don't need to stick your nose in it.
That's why I was looking at it, Mr. Chairman.
You weren't elected to make an ass out of yourself either, was you?
That's right.
Okay. All right, item number three, prepayment to technical appraisal service for an additional 600 parcels of land at $15 each for a total of $9,000. Do I hear a motion? We accept this.
I think that was left, Bill, you correct me if I'm wrong, uh, instead of giving a number on that, you wanted to, instead of saying 600, you just wanted to say $15 per parcel. Is that correct? And I think that's what, Frank, isn't that what you suggested? So, that needs to be amended, commissioners, just to say, uh, for additional parcels at $15 each.
Maybe four hundred, I suppose.
Not to exceed $9,000.
Now, here a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second, second, second. All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. All right, item number four is approval of three, three applications for zoning changes. One of them is a plant nursery at Hill 121, want to change it from to agriculture, forestry. A petition to split zone at 3521 Highway, 32 West Bristol, Georgia, Land District Four, Land Lot 103, consisting of 102 acres, of 5.51 acres, proposed zoning change to see commercial from Molder Family for the purpose of operating a used car lot. Number three is a result to grant condition use of that 4764 Sanderwood Circle of Land District Nine, Land Lot 144, consisted of 1.53 acres, owner intends to open a live plant nursery.
All three of these, Mr. Chairman, have been approved by the board commissioners?
Yes.
For reference. Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Approve three security lines for the jail with Georgia Power Company to be paid from the sheriff's special fund account. I have your motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Number six, approve paying $3,000 to the city of Paterson for repairs on the air conditioner unit at EMS Station Two. Do I hear a motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. All right, number seven is annual bid lubrication, pest control, fire extinguishers, and cover pipe.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull the, uh, no, it's not pull, you have to reject the bids on the lubricant, uh, because we don't want to bid that out until we get the new facility built, Public Works. Uh, we don't want to be on our contract before we get that, because our needs may differ.
Probably by the book.
Right, and so I'd like y'all to, uh-
Reject.
-reject the, uh, bids on the lubricant, but you can move forward with the pest control, fire extinguishers, and cover pipes. You'll have to amend the, somebody have to make a motion to that effect, then.
I'll make your motion, Mr. Chairman. I'll make the motion. Second.
Third.
All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Pest control, the staff recommended the vendors to, awarded the annual bids, the pest control went to Sunbelt Termite for $150 monthly, $1,800 a year. Fire extinguisher, the hood system inspection at the jail, ABC fire extinguishers. Cover pipe, the metal pipe went to Cherokee Cover. The polyethylene pipe went to Contech Engineer Solutions. Do I hear a motion? We accept this. So, move it. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, Doug Neal's presentation of bids received for construction for the Pierce County Public
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening. Just as a brief overview, we did a project for the Pierce County Maintenance Facility. I dealt with the committee of, uh, that was put together with a building committee, uh, went through that group, visited the site, visited the scope. Based on the approval of, of that information, we sent out a, uh, approved set of plans that went out to bid. The process that we used for this, uh, bid was a competitive seal proposals that were received and evaluated, get to the technical side, and, uh, within the laws of the state of Georgia Code, Section 36-91-21G. This was not a straight low bid, this was actually a proposal, uh, based on factors. Part of the regulations are when you advertise the bid, you have a list what the different factors were. Those were advertised publicly before anybody received the plans and, uh, made their submits. In, uh, general terms, there was basically four different breakdowns. Number one was worked on in Pierce County, with emphasis on a specific project type that we did. Number two was the general experience overall with this, uh, project type, that was a 20%. The first one was 30%. The third area was financial stability of the company and, uh, general stability of the, of the contractor, that had a 20% rating. And number four was the project price, and that had a rating of 30%. We had four independent individuals review the proposals. They independently put down their scores. At the end, we tally up the scores, uh, to find out who was the overall low proposer, proposer that would be deemed the most responsible and responsive, uh, and be most advantageous to Pierce County. Based on, on that process, RH Tyson Construction had the highest overall score, and based on the recommendation would be, we would recommend that that, uh, this project be awarded to RH Tyson Construction.
Any questions, Commissioner? Your bid denied?
No, it's already bid. All you got to do is print the bid, award the bid rather to the construction company.
Do I hear a motion that we award the bid to RH Tyson Construction Company? I make a motion that we award according to the, uh, approval of the group that awarded to Tyson. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Item number nine is the bids on the scrap material from the Public Workshop. The miscellaneous items, the bidder was Gary Murray, $10. Brake fluid, one gallon. What's this, 11? 11 gallons?
Eleven, eleven.
Joe Demember bid 65, and Greg Bagley bid $150. Awarded to the highest.
Right.
Okay. Number six, 17 improver, 11. Gary Murray bid 25, that was the only bid. Number six, eight horsepower Briggs and Stratton generator, $50, Gary Murray. Number seven, tractor seal, sealer, Gary Murray, $20. Water corrosion inhabitor, six, Gary Murray, $20. Hydraulic oil, five gallons, went to, there's only one, it went for $20 to Gary Murray. Caterpillar paint, paint thinner, Gary Murray, $10. Vokes, load nuts, and slide brackets went to Gary Murray, $20. Number 12, gray Dupont paint, I guess this is 31 gallons, went to Gary Murray, $10. Number 14, one box of circular sliders went to Chris Peacock for $100. There's, uh, B miscellaneous tin, 80-plus sheets, went to Joe Demember for $355. John T. Wilson, 182, 25. Chris Peacock, 201. Greg Bagley, 325. Charlie Viney, 350. Earl Thrift, 300. Gary Murray, 50. So, do I hear a motion that we accept all the bids, the high bids?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just, uh, like, for instance, the tractors, use the tractor seals, five, is that $20 for the lot, or is that $20 for the lot?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend sale of surplus stuff in the highest bidder.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signifying aye.
Aye.
And the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question of the commissioners. All the items that remain, uh, there were no bids on several items. Is that correct, Lynn? She had, Lynn has pictures and, and numbers of items that nobody bid on. Uh, what is y'all's pleasure for, for those items? Would you like us to put them back on the computer and, and leave them up for bid for a certain period of time, see if anybody bids on them?
What? What's, what's left on them?
Well, it's, uh, you know, all that pallets of that paint and bags and stuff. That paint won't go away.
Tires.
Tires and, uh, there's several items out there. We'd be glad to leave them on the site and see if people want to bid on, uh, another 30 days or whatever y'all want to do.
That sounds like a good idea.
We'll pass this down if y'all take a look at it. If somebody would put that in motion, we'd be glad to do that.
I hear a motion that we put all the items that didn't sell back on.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by signifying aye. Number 10, item number 10 on the agenda is Jordan Sasser's discussion on members to be placed on the AMCA board.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Last week, y'all pointed me to come up with an exploratory committee for this, uh, for the NFC, product of the NFC building and the multipurpose facility. And possibly bring in somebody in YMCA or someone else for the use of it. First, I'd just like to thank the commission for giving us the opportunity to possibly work with the YMCA. Their reputation is renowned across the United States. Uh, we look forward to exploring the different avenues which we can possibly work together. If there are any areas of concern, I'm sure the group which we have assembled can work together to reach a common goal that will breed success. Our goal is to create a program that is most advantageous to the citizens of Pierce County. And the members of this exploratory committee are Tommy Lohman, which represents the city of Blackshear, Matt Carter from IDA, Coach Maureen Brown, Brenda Dennison. She'd be paired with Ms. Phyllis for the, uh, Ms. Brenda would, uh, cover Offerman as well as our senior citizens, that demographic. Uh, Ms. Sammy June Patterson and Mr. Paul Christian for the county. And I met with Mr. Lohman and Mr. Carter this morning and we sat down and discussed this list and just tried to come up with the, trying to cover every socioeconomic background, every demographic, gender, and just have a, uh, a good exploratory committee that will encompass everyone in this county. But we also encourage, you know, when we do have this meeting, which we haven't said yet, to encourage the citizens of Pierce County to come and be involved because their voice matters.
One other thing we'd like to add that Jordan and I had a conversation this, uh, this afternoon. And also, you know, you've got other entities as OTC. You got other folks that might have an interest in participating in a program that would be in those facilities that would benefit the, uh, the folks of Pierce County. And that's the goal, if I understand Jordan correctly, that's the direction he wants to head in, is to put, uh, a number of activities in those facilities to benefit all the citizens of Pierce County. So I think he's done a good job putting that together.
Have you contacted all the people you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
And they all agree upon the point?
Yes, sir.
I like a motion then, Mr. Chairman, that we move forward with that score. More options up there.
You hear a second? You hear a second?
My second.
All in favor by signify aye. Aye. And the ayes have it.
And then when we come up with a date and a time, we'll post it on the county website. Therefore, the people will be able to know when, where to participate.
Make sure you let the papers go too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Item number 11 is Bill Roger's discussion on Q Public.
I think Edward's going to join you on that. Edward, you'll join Bill up front on that.
Mr. Katie has, uh, got some statistics for us, so.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. I went out through Q Public and looked at the surrounding communities that use Q Public in a lot of the states of Georgia. Basically, there's a couple of counties surrounded us such as Ware County and Atkinson County. I think Ben Hill County is some of those counties that actually have a subscription service to Q Public. I asked Q Public to provide some information towards us on the statistics, on the number of website hits per IP address, which kind of gives us an idea how many people may be hitting the site from Pierce County. They were unable to provide that information to me today. Uh, I think since back in 2005, I think we've had close to over 5 million hits on the site. We have an average of 2,000 hits a day. But we cannot for sure tell the board that those hits are coming from inside Pierce County. Uh, it appears that, uh, a lot of mortgage companies, a lot of outside lending industries are the ones who use this resource to do that. I talked to Ware County this afternoon and talked to Mr. Carter over there. They had also made the recommendation to go to a subscription service over there in Ware County. At first, there were some little bumps in the road that they have found that has been one of the best decisions that they have done. Did some numbering. We're paying about 6,000 something dollars a year for the service. Uh, they base it on subscriptions. Uh, if you're in a bigger county, you probably have more of a subscription service. That's where all your mortgage companies are. Companies or businesses such as just smaller entities such as Pierce and maybe Atkinson County, they might not have the volume. And, uh, Q Public may not be able to recoup a lot of money, uh, from us locally. But across the state and across the board, they do pretty well. And so where they don't make it up with the small counties, they do with the bigger counties. Also, it has not increased their traffic too much in their, in their departments. It's run pretty smooth. One unique thing I have found about Q Public, and I was talking to Bill about this, is the community still has the ability to access Q Public with that information from Pierce County free. They're able to access the value of the land, the owner of the land. But if they want to look at sales, if they want to look at maps, they want to look at GIS sketching, some of the other dramatics that lending institutions would want to have, that is a subscription service that they would have to provide for. I did talk with them in regards to county use, the county would be given IDs and passwords and no charge, they will be able to access anything.
Bill, we'll, we'll leave this up to y'all's recommendation.
And commissioners, reading this came about, it's costing us $6,000 a year to do this. And we, we were exploring ideas and ways in which we could recoup our costs, uh, and still not penalize our staff with all the work that they have to do in the court system of this. And, uh, so we are looking at other counties, what they do, and I appreciate you guys doing the work on that. And if we can bring something back to you that y'all can vote on, uh, that will save us that $6,000, we, we would greatly appreciate it.
How much does this service cost?
It won't cost us anything.
For private individuals?
If you're looking at a mortgage company at $180 a year, you can get a daily use. I think it's like $10, you can get a subscription service like $20 a month.
That goes to Q Public then?
Yeah, it goes to Q Public.
Now, we could.
The county doesn't have to pay that.
Right. The county doesn't have to pay. We could have our own in-house system, but we'd have to buy a server and we'd have to hire a GP, uh, a GIS person and a whole lot of stuff that we just can't do at this present time. So, uh, that's the reason why they headed in the direction they're headed now on the research.
Was paid for this year. It's paid for this year.
Right. We've got a vote on it right now.
No, but we will ask y'all to vote on it.
We talked to one county that, that done away with it and now has brought it back.
Have you had anybody that took on the, they did the subscription and then stopped and went back to giving it free?
I did talk with one county, I think it was Putnam County. The board assessors opted to go to a subscription. After a couple of months, the county commissioners asked them to go back and, and back up and make for the service because they had so many complaints. But then Brantley County did.
I understand there's two counties around here, like you say, Brantley's one and one down the road with the same.
What are the reasons?
It's according to who's using the system, as, as Edward pointed out. Uh, if you've got a lot of banks and a lot of real estate people and other folks using it, that's one thing. Because they're charging their customers for that service. If it's a lot of individuals, that's a different story. So we'll bring the facts back to you and y'all can vote on it based on what's best for, uh, the citizens of Pierce County.
What it has done, I talked to some of the other counties, it has eliminated a lot of people going out and surfing the net and surfing those parcels, seeing the regularities and maybe appraising of land. And they submit all this information and they bog down the tax appraiser's office. And, uh, so there is a benefit for an individual to come in and purchase a service. That way, you're eliminating people who are just out there surfing the net, just looking and looking for information and just bombarded the tax assessor's office with useless questions. So it, there's a win-win situation either way. Thank you. Thank you, folks.
This one I think, uh, Bill would have taken this year and it could be applied out of our mind, but.
Right. That's exactly right.
And, uh, I'm a little experienced with it too. Like in, I think you pointed out, like Ware County, they, you know, public can go on those couple of points they can get as far as they can get.
Right.
For less than one subscribe to.
Okay, item number 12. Ken Justice's discussion on Georgia Trauma Commission bid replacement grant.
Well, we're back. We got a grant from Georgia Trauma Commission and we're asking for permission to start taking bids and we have to make a decision on what we're going to do with the old ambulance. Because now the state requires us to write and submit a plan back detailing out what our anticipations of doing with ambulance. Uh, I provided the maintenance reports on that truck to the county manager. Yeah, we'd like to keep the truck, but then we also understand his point, he's looking for money. So I'm not going to argue to back. Um, I think it's best we keep it until we get another truck to replace it, but we hadn't had five trucks in the past, so.
And just to add to it, Ken and I agree on one point, and that would be, that's about the only point. The fact that he needs to keep that unit till this new unit comes in.
Right.
Uh, and one factor that pushed me over the edge was it cost us around $9,000 to maintain a unit that we're not using. So, um, we just don't have that in the budget and, uh, I'd be happy to see him with four, uh, four good ambulances instead of, uh, three and, and one that gives him problems. So we'd like to surplus, uh, the one that he's replacing after the new one arrives.
Probably the first of the year or so, probably, I mean, it's going to take.
Time running down.
Bid, I think, uh, it's going to take a couple of families to get an ambulance, I mean.
Whatever time it takes. So we're going to need a motion on.
I think, I think we need to keep the ambulance. I have a feeling we don't need it. Must pleasure the board.
So we have one in or another or just start the middle?
Start in the middle.
Surplus?
Surplus it.
Surplus it. Putting that into a motion?
Yes, sir.
Have a second. Can you, that is me now.
You can vote for what?
All in favor by signify aye? Aye. And the ayes have it. Item number 14.
Okay. Turn to you.
Is that a motion, the surplus?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Now we have a motion now for Ken to start his bid process.
Oh, we're not, oh, we're.
What you want Ken to start the bid process?
Yeah.
Not till he gets, not till he gets a new ambulance, then.
Yeah, I want him to have a bid up till he gets a new.
Right.
Well, she probably needs a new motion.
Yeah, she needs a new motion.
I have a new motion.
I make a motion.
That's, that's what he.
Oh, you don't need a motion. I got a second.
Second.
All in favor by signify aye? Aye. And the ayes have it. Whatever other new motion you need.
I think that you don't need any more motion.
Okay, item 13 is Ken Justice's discussion on 2011 AFG regions on grant.
As requested, we have three prices. And we make the recommendation to award to the low bid of railroad communications. I have the inspection that's needed and we'll put them attached to the brick. Low bid of $141,670.
And our cost on that, Ken, was like $7,000?
It's going to be 5% of the total. This is.
About 5.52.
And city pays some and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's complicated, go back and, it's five and two and a half, three and a, or one and a quarter.
So Ken, the low bid is $141,670, based on state contract.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Who's the winner? Who's the bidder?
Railroad communication.
I make a motion. Accept that bid. We have a second. All in favor by signify aye? Aye. And the ayes have it. Number 14. NFC of a purpose facility and a library project invoices total $134,880.90. I hear a motion that we approve. This money. That might get $2,572 of that is in the fire.
How much?
$2,572 is in the fire, and I guess, you know, this for cleaning? What do you got?
What is it called?
That invoice is for the sander.
It was a sander.
That we had to replace.
What if I're not? There, that's what calls. But, but chairman, still unknown at this time.
Still unknown.
Fire marshal working on that?
Don't you like it?
Is there some fire marshal working on that?
Commissioners, we really do need to pay these invoices. If there's a question about anything, uh, somebody needs to ask a question or y'all need, we got to pay them.
Y'all hear a motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor by signify aye? Aye. And the ayes have it. Item number 15 is Kenny Thorne's discussion on weight limit on county roads.
Good evening, y'all. It'd be, he serves.
It'd be easier if y'all asked questions, I can answer. I really don't know what y'all looking for, but...
We really appreciate you coming. I'm going to turn it over to Bill. And Bill's one that had all the questions.
I had several calls from residents in the Midway Church area and Dean's Steel area. There's been an exceptional amount of tractor trailer and big, large truck traffic on these roads. And I've noticed myself, trucks, not only log trucks, but I had last week, I believe it was a low boy with a large boat come through evidently from 121 coming across to 84 for a shortcut.
Yes, sir.
And I think we need to do something to curtail some of the traffic if possible. I don't know whether it'd be load limits or signs or just what it would be, but...
On a county road, to begin with, the weight limit, if it's adopted in by the county commissioner, there'd be an ordinance made if it's 6,000 pounds. But if the customer or truck driver or company is delivered or picking up on that road, they can carry state weights. If they are not picking up on that road or delivering on that road, they cannot have the 6,000 pounds. But there has to be a county ordinance, and there's got to be signs posted at each end of the road in order for the state to enforce it. County cannot enforce weight limits. It's got to be state, got to be certified under the...
Is there something about forest products in this?
All trucks. There's no... It don't limit who it is. It's all trucks. Now, I understand what you're talking about going down Dean's Steel. They're going to the industrial park, right?
Yes.
Okay. You got to realize the road that turns off of 84 and the road that turns off Dean's Steel is the same road. So they can take either route.
I don't quite follow you.
The road that cuts through, if I'm correct, and tell me if I'm wrong, but the road that they turn to go to the industrial park is Bowen Road, ain't that correct?
Right, that's the one coming off...
The far end of Dean's Steel, ain't that the same road?
Bowen Road, right.
See, they can go either way because they're hitting the same road. You understand what I'm saying there?
Yeah.
But I mean, they got to have a route to where they're going to. And they can actually haul state weights going in that route because they're picking up and delivering.
But it looks like to me that it would be more convenient for them to use the industrial when it, rather than coming through on a shortcut.
Yes.
Either coming off of 84 and going up to Dean's Steel, then going down to Bowen Road.
Yes. And I agree with you, but we cannot tell them which way to go because it's still the same road that they're having to go to get to. You understand what I'm saying?
Halfway.
The two county roads that they're having to take to get to that one county road to go where they're going, they can use either one of them.
But if they're coming off of 84, going on to that county road, why couldn't they go on 84 and come off of Bowen Road and be right there?
They can, but we... And I'm saying we, when I was with the state, I used to work with the state with theirs, too. We did not tell them what route they could go, as long as that road, county road they was using connected to. Now, if they went down two or three different county roads to make it shorter route to get to that road, no, they can't do that. They got to take the most direct route, and either one would be the same because it's going to the same road, to the same location. You just talked one end of Bowen Road, the other end. So we can't tell them which one to take.
So what would we... You say we would need to get an ordinance, or...
Yes, sir. You have to pass a county ordinance to put a weight limit on the county road, which all county roads is 56,000 pounds. And a sign would have to be posted at each end. Then we could get the state to help us monitor the road.
You say it can't be less than 56,000 pounds?
Sir.
If the limit can't be less than 56,000?
Cannot be more than 56,000. Yes, sir.
So it could be 40?
All the roads I've ever seen is 56,000 pounds, county maintains 56,000 pounds. Now, and this route, and there might be some in the county, if it's got a weight limit bridge on it, now that's a different story. But, yes.
There's a large culvert. Not a bridge, not an actual bridge.
But even if it's a weight limit, just keep this in mind, if it is a low limit weight bridge, you got to have it at both ends of the bridge. It's got to be marked. And the way Atlanta always told us as state officers to do it, first time, make sure the road's marked, warn them the first time, second time, take action. So that's the way it was always handled on the state level.
Kenny, I understand you say the state would have to enforce it, the county?
County, county didn't enforce it. That's considered a 32 code highway and ferries, and the only one that has authority on that is DNF.
Even the county red.
Right. Now, well, let me rephrase that. Yes, you can, but you got to get pre-approved through the DOT and actually have to do trainings and get certified. In fact, the state will supply skills to do it. But that's the only way that county can, only way county could do it.
And that's what you'd have to do with weight trucks?
Right. Because even though you put, say, 56,000 pound weight limit on it, you go to the judge and say, I know he weighs over 56,000 pounds. How do you know? Could you imagine being in front of John Figg and him asking you? I mean, you need proof of how much he weighs. Even though you know he weighs more, but...
Let me ask you some more questions. Anybody in the industrial park, regardless of their weight, can use that road? If they're taking a product out of industrial park, calling it Jacksonville, they can go out to that road to 121?
Yes.
Regardless of their weight?
Yes.
I mean, what's the thing be with Ace Pole? That they can deliver their poles down St. John Church Road to 121?
Right.
One of the other problems with the road, especially Midway Church, is so narrow.
Yes, sir.
We've got several, a couple of curves that are pretty bad. And if they come around that curve, they're either over the line or either off the road and they're cutting off the edge of the road.
Yes. When I was with the state, we've had several calls on that road. In fact, y'all might have seen me out there working at the road a lot. And the only... I called a couple cutting through that one supposed to, and I did with them. But most of the ones that come through there is going to Ace Pole or coming from Ace Pole or two. You use this as a rule of thumb, empty chip trucks, say, he's going to weigh 30,000 at the most, 32, maybe one with a sleeper. A lot of trucks going to be even less than that. So empty truck can go down. You really can't say that they can't, you know, as far as the ordinance with the weight limit.
I know what Bill is talking about, these trucks, these trucks in Coffey County. They come through there and come 138, come across. Since the red light got out there so they can get across 84?
Yes.
They just added another 100 trucks on that road.
Now, like I said, they cannot just cut through to make it a shortcut. They've got to be delivering somewhere back in that area. They cannot go through as a shortcut. You put the signs up, do an ordinance, put the signs up, the state can come in and take the road. They cannot just cut through there to take the shortcut. Say they're coming from White Cross and they're going to Wood Mill and Hoboken, they can't cut through there.
That's the main thing that I would like to see ceased, shortcut.
Yes.
I have no problem with the other.
But that's it. You have to take, got to get orders, got to have a sign on both ends and, you know, cover it that way. That's what I ask you now.
I got a question I'd like to ask while we're talking on this subject.
Yes.
If the county was to pass an ordinance where they couldn't get on it unless you, like you're talking about, the road you got, Gilman would've been shut down this week because of traffic yesterday and today. Log trucks, chip trucks, everything is going right to my house on Trudy Road.
Yes.
Going and coming. And I know it ain't good on the road, but then they ain't got no other way of getting out because the railroad cross is messed up and they've got to make a living, I'm sure.
The way we've always addressed that before is use common sense. I mean, that's the way they came around. In fact, today, I stopped a couple of trucks to make sure that's what they was doing today. But that's, that's the way we've always handled it before. We'd find out what the problem was, why they was using it, and then we'd let them use it. Being you'd have to get out there and enforce it, make sure they quit using that route.
Log truck came by yesterday, I was over at the farmhouse, and he slowed down like he wanted to turn in on Stanfield Road. And apparently, he didn't know where he was at and so forth, and not familiar with the road on the cell phone. If he'd have turned in on Stanfield Road, I was going to go ask him to not do it because Stanfield Road ain't up to par for that kind of doing. But finally, apparently, he got straightened out on it and he eased on out and went on the other way. He came in on the Owens Road. That Trudy Road has been steady going yesterday and today.
I'd like to have a dollar for every one that's come down the last two days.
Huh?
I'd like to have a dollar for every one that's been down the last two days.
I didn't understand you.
I'd like to have a dollar for every truck that's been down the last two days.
Amen. Yes, sir.
Around the block. Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Worst thing is log trucks.
Is that it?
Yep. Log trucks beats highway out more than any trucks that they just pull.
I hear a motion that we go into executive session on personnel. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor of us sign the fine, aye?
Aye.
The ayes have it.